Today, we're here for the announcement of the 2029 College Football Playoff National Championship Game.
To have the College Football Playoff National Championship coming back to Hillsborough County for the first time since 2017. It's going to take place in 2029 right here at Raymond James Stadium. But when you look at all the marquee events around the country, this is one of the biggest. So to have it coming right here to our hometown is amazing.
Well, for starters, our community is so incredibly welcoming. It's truly Team Tampa Bay. That's the term we like to use. It's not a cute slogan. It's one that we take seriously. Today was a prime example of that, where all of our partners come together. We're at the table saying, how can we work together? What can we do to make this a better experience, the very best it can possibly be? And we certainly look forward to doing that here with our second College Football Playoff National Championship Game.
for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Planned City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at planhillsborough.org.
Good evening and welcome to the November 10th, 2025 Public Hearing of the Planning Commission on City of Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. For those attending in person and wishing to speak on any agenda item, please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. To minimize feedback in the audio, all online participants in the meeting will be muted until it is their opportunity to speak. Planning commissioners should unmute themselves to indicate that they would like to speak. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the clerk. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. When your name is called, you will be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Please wait until the chair calls on you to begin speaking. State your name at the beginning of your comments and adhere to the time limits. If anyone has difficulties or is watching via HTV and would like to provide comments to be included in the record for the local government hearing, please email them to planner@plancom.org. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal response. Planning commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, a second and discussion of vote will be taken. To all participants, please note that tonight's hearing concerns proposed changes to the comprehensive plan. Presentations should not include matters related to zoning applications and site plans that are not before the commission. Zoning conditions are not relevant to plan amendments and may not be considered by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission's purview in making a recommendation is limited to consistency or inconsistency with the comprehensive plan. And with that, I'd like to please ask the clerk to go ahead and call roll.
Good evening. Bowden?
Yeah.
Cardenas? Kona? Jemison?
Here.
Cress? Coogler?
Here.
Lenkus? Lauk?
Here.
Seben? Barry?
Here.
Orton?
Here.
Joseph?
Here.
You have a quorum, sir.
Thank you. All right, our first agenda item up is 2A, TACPA 25-14 Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, 7409 South Manhattan Avenue and 4436 West Richardson Avenue. And the presenter is Quinn Steele.
Good evening, Quinn Steele, Planning Commission staff. Tonight, I'll be presenting TACPA 2514, which is a map amendment for 7409 South Manhattan Avenue and 4436 West Richardson Avenue. The request before you is privately initiated in small scale, covering approximately 3.23 acres. And the request is to change the future land use designation from residential 10 to residential 20. Here's a general location map. The subject site is located within the South Tampa Planning District, the Port Tampa City neighborhood, and the coastal high hazard area. Here's an aerial photo of the subject site, which is outlined in yellow. The subject site and all the vacant land to the north are the part of a historic landfill site. And then to the east is the MacDill Air Force Base. The site wraps around existing single-family detached homes along West Richardson Avenue. Immediately south and west are vacant as well. Further northwest and southwest are primarily single-family detached with limited single-family attached uses. Here's a photo looking north on West Richardson Avenue towards the subject site. Looking east on West Richardson Avenue, and the subject site is on the left. These are the homes along West Richardson Avenue. The city-owned parcels to the north, which are being used for dumpster storage, and looking east on South Manhattan Avenue towards MacDill. The adopted future land use map designates the site as residential 10, which is also to the south and the west. So the northeast and south are public semi-public. Further south is light industrial, and further north approaching Interbay Boulevard is residential 20. The four CMU parcels to the south are city-owned and were amended through a 1998 plan amendment, which was intended to allow a private golf course that was never developed. Lastly, portions of the site are within the coastal high hazard area, which is shown by that green line. And then this map shows the site under the proposed residential 20 designation. Under the current R10 designation, the site can be considered for 32 dwelling units or just over 49,000 square feet of non-residential uses, subject to locational criteria. Under the proposed R20 designation, the site may be considered for 64 dwelling units or just over 70,000 square feet of non-residential uses, which would also be subject to locational criteria. The proposed R20 designation could result in the increase of density and intensity and would allow for multifamily uses. Any non-residential uses would be subject to locational criteria, which is expanded under the R20 designation. During agency review, both the City Planning Department and Land Development Coordination objected to or found the request inconsistent, noting concerns with increased residential density within the coastal high hazard area. I also just wanted to note that we received a few written opposition letters, including some that were submitted this afternoon, which you may not have had time to review, but those were uploaded in the case folder on the website. While formulating our recommendation, Planning Commission staff reviewed numerous policies, including some that support infill on a vacant and underutilized site and ensuring an adequate supply of housing. Though these policies would support the request, the overall request is inconsistent with these objectives and policies on the next slide. First, the site is located on a local roadway and not conveniently served by transit. These policies listed here support focusing higher-density residential development in areas with access to goods, services, and transit. Today, this area functions as a low-density, single-family neighborhood. The nearby PSP and CMU 35 parcels are vacant and serve as a buffer in between MacDill and the single-family neighborhood rather than an active higher-intensity area. The area does not indicate a transition towards a more intense development pattern. Finally, both parcels are considered within the coastal high hazard area, where the comprehensive plan calls for no net increase in residential density due to evacuation and public safety concerns. With that, Planning Commission staff recommends the proposed map amendment be found inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Does the applicant have a presentation?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members. My name is Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, number 451 in St. Petersburg. This is TACPA 25-14, which is 3.23 acres, rez 10, seeking rez 20. The project goal overall is 52 attached units. And I'll just make you aware, as a little background, that there is a companion rezoning application that has other constraints. Your staff has always oriented you to the site very well, which is in the far-south Tampa area, right next to MacDill Air Force Base, as noted here. You can see the Air Force Base is by far the predominant impacting element, along with the residential. The site is composed of these two parcels. It surrounds a number of relatively new single-family homes. And as staff indicated, to the north, the other big feature is the City of Tampa Garbage Dump landfill. So what's proposed would be multifamily units along the parcels that you see here in red. And this is one view on the roadway. These are the relatively new homes. And the site runs to the right in this photo. So looking at the future land use categories, you see the predominant category to the north and to the south. And obviously, to the east is MacDill Air Force Base. Public semi-public is a very intensive category. There's also CMU 35, which is to the south. When you look at the public semi-public, it has a huge FAR, up to 2.0, meant for intensive uses: vertical, mixed-use, single-use, commercial, residential, retail, commercial, general commercial, service office, a wide range of uses. Very intensive. Obviously, as we know, MacDill Air Force Base as well is indicated, at this point, public semi-public. Looking at the land use category matrix, public semi-public is for government buildings, public semi-private schools, public colleges, public airports, public parking structures. Big developments. Key characteristic, a large floor plate, multi-story structures. Now, when your planning commission summarizes in their report how they see the site, and with respect to the Planning Commission staff, we see it differently. They do note the subject site parcels are abutting City of Tampa, which is the City of Tampa Garbage Dump all along the north, MacDill Air Force Base, which is a tremendous impact, because the runway runs right there. Parcels primarily recognized under public semi-public. But then also adds in and recognizes the Community Mixed Use 35, which is also a very intensive category. But the last sentence of the staff report is the neighborhood can be characterized as an established, single-family neighborhood. We just don't agree with that. In fact, I don't really see a major incorporation of the staff's report to include the airport, which is a tremendous impact at this immediate area and virtually abutting the site before you. Again, you can see public semi-public to the north, public semi-public to the south, CMU 35, public semi-public to the east, and yes, there is R10, certainly. Now, when you look at uses in the immediate area, there is single multifamily. The staff kind of mentioned that. They didn't go too deep into it. And it works very well. This is a couple pictures of a single-family one side, multifamily the other. Works really well in the immediate vicinity. Here's another picture, multifamily, single-family, immediate vicinity. Works really well. That's what we're proposing, multifamily. And when you look at your comprehensive plan, there's certainly policies that support it. In fact, your staff told you about two of them, one infill and a second comp policy, which lines with these, which is Policy 9.6.1. Encourage the development and retention of a diversity of multifamily housing types. That's what we're doing. Land use Policy 9.8.2, provide for a scaled development of building types that differs from those of single-family and low-density multifamily areas in order to accommodate increased residential densities. And generally, generally, location of single-family attached housing units shall be limited to the periphery and may be considered, if demonstrated, that they can be integrated with single-family homes. We believe that we meet that policy as well. Now, I do want to go into a much different direction, something that you don't see too often, but of which, at this site, is a significant and major public safety and public health issue. And that is the City of Tampa Garbage Dump, which abuts to the site. And yes, also includes the site. City of Tampa exercise bearing garbage on this site. This is just one historical aerial, and we have our environmental expert here, who can answer any questions, if you have any further questions from what I have to say, has been severely impacted. What is that impact? That impacts this site, impacts those single-family homes, and potentially other properties further to the south. And if you look at the EPC site, their old landfill investigation program, specifically number 54, Manhattan and Richardson, is a site that we're working with today. To make matters worse, the topo runs downhill from the north. So when we have seepage and when we have seepage and groundwater movement, that goes towards this project, the existing homes, and potentially other homes. But here's the great news. The City of Tampa is not going to clean it up, as far as we know. In fact, they've had some legal issues going back and forth. The county is not going to clean it up, but this applicant will clean it up. He's currently working with EPC, working towards a director's authorization to remove and clean up the project site. He's the only one willing to do it. And that weeds into, that weaves into part of the reason why we're here. So when we work with Envirex, and Ms. Bernstein is here, again, if you have any questions. They investigated the site. They did probing of the site, checked into the site. And there's all types of garbage: cloth, plastic, brick, glass, metal, and so on. But the way that we can improve it, and even if it's cleaned up, it requires monitoring. It can still provide groundwater impacts and methane impacts. So in their direction from Envirex is to maximize the impervious ground levels in the form of building slabs preventing site occupants from accessing site soil beneath a two-foot clean soil cap. Impervious building slabs will provide an effective means of vapor control for any methane or vapor phase contaminants. Plus, the first story would not be livable, which provides a further gap. So we want to increase the density as much as we can, so it minimizes any open areas, people having gardens or wanting their pools, to keep it as impervious as possible, per the directions of Envirex, the environmental expert. Minimizing the outdoor spaces surrounding these homes will limit the amount of air where soil cap can be disturbed. Ground floor reserved for garage utility space, significant separation from any spaces that may experience potential vapor migration. So we do have a significant problem here. It has impacted this site. It is and will be impacting other sites. This applicant is going to address it. We also asked Patricia Ortiz, a private planner, AICP planner, she's been around a long time, to have her look at this as well. Her conclusion was the proposed development is an infill development, which is a policy in your comp plan, associated with the Bronfield site, and thus is consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan. In regard to the coastal high hazard area, one thing that your staff mentioned a little bit is that 63% of the site is actually outside the coastal high hazard. But per your comp plan and per policy, once you reach a certain level, they have to look at and consider it as the entire site is in the coastal high hazard. But that is not the case. Factually, 63% is outside the coastal high hazard. And when Patricia looked at it, per the direction of the comp plan, which is to evaluate if there's negative impacts on hurricane evacuation times, routes, and shelter demand. So it's real easy, believe me, I understand. It's really easy to, for anyone, the knee-jerk, and here, okay, coastal high hazard, we just had a couple really bad storms. But we don't have to do that. What we have to look at is if, as directed by the comp plan, if there are negative impacts on hurricane evacuation times, routes, and shelter demands, which is what she did. And she evaluated and did the math. In addition of under zoning 52 units, under comp plan, it would be higher, would have no substantial increase on the hurricane evacuation time. She went by generating how many parking spaces and how many trips would be generated. The practical standard she uses is 24 hours for evacuation. She looked at all the shelters, and here's just some of them. She looked at all the evacuation routes. And her conclusion is that these number of units will not have an impact on evacuation or shelter. The other critical factor is if there is an inundation on this property, and we have very shallow, buried garbage, it's going to come loose. It's going to create a lot of groundwater. It's going to create impacts for the homes in the vicinity. This applicant is going to fix it. This applicant is going to address it, going to put a lot of money behind it, and bring it to a site that meets your comp plan policy. So in summary, the surrounding future land use categories are very intensive, much more than we feel that what staff has presented to you. Just look at MacDill Air Force Base, right next door. Comp plan policies do support it. We presented them to you. Your staff presented two policies to you as well. The impact of the city dump is an absolutely critical component for public safety and public health. And the coastal high hazard is well addressed by the minimal density increase. So that, we appreciate your attention. We're happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
If I could just make one quick clarification. I think the quote that was attributed to Planning Commission staff was actually from the City of Tampa Planning Department's report. So I just wanted to...
Was that the acreage or the area that was in the coastal high hazard that you're talking about?
No, it was a slide with a quote about the area being an established, single-family neighborhood.
Okay.
That was in their comments. That's all.
All right.
One zoning stamp for us, the other, but thank you, Ms. Arneese.
All right, we had a couple people sign up in the public comment for this one, so we will let them speak. And first, we will start with Stephanie Pointer.
Is this thing on? Yeah. Is this thing on? Is this on? Okay. I mean, I don't need it right this very second, but I will need it in a minute without the light on it.
Good evening, Stephanie Pointer. Mr. Pressman did a great job telling us how disgusting this site currently is. They did such a great job that they sued the city for $57 million after they paid $500,000 for this lot. It's probably worth three or four million. I'm not going to waste your time talking about competent substantial evidence tonight, because this is a more egregious project than that. It's disgusting. They want to build right next to MacDill Air Force Base. They are hoping and praying that the people who move to MacDill, who know nothing about this community, will not notice the fact that there's a dump to the north of it. So during the last, hold on just a second. Oh, old lady, sorry. During the last hurricane... During the last hurricane, for almost 75 days, they piled garbage up at that site. At the site, it's not going to come up. I have video, and you probably saw those videos, of the solid waste department standing in front of at least a story of garbage at the eight-day point. They collected garbage 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for 65 days after that. It was on the third, it was three stories high. I mean, I was out there. I saw it. And so were these people from MacDill or the people who buy these properties? They move in there. Yes, they may know that it's contaminated property. I don't care how much you dig up of it. It's still contaminated property. And there's no proof that the city actually did it, because you know what? In the last year, I have filed code enforcement complaints for people dumping down there. Okay, so let's keep this straight. There's no proof that that happened. But these guys are not saving us. They're trying to put together a plan that is more density in our community, and this is not the periphery, because there's other areas. And guess what? That area, CMU 35, that's to the south, it's also an old dump. So why anybody would want to do this, and I've already written to the command, because I honestly believe that this community would be targeted, our military folks. And the property abuts MacDill, there's no yard waste, was taken to this area, and it was three stories high by the time they got finished. Three stories of garbage behind these people's property, if they were... Three stories of garbage behind these people's property if they were goofy enough to buy it or not uninformed enough to buy it. I can't imagine. I own a house on that street, they ran 24 hours a day, seven days a week, dump trucks up and down Manhattan. But this guy thinks it's great. And the lies that were told in the public meeting were absolutely astounding. Oh, we didn't know when we bought the property that it was contaminated. That's not what the lawsuit said that they filed in federal courts against the city.
Thank you, Ms. Pointer. All right, next up we have John B. All right. Next up, we have Charles Davis.
Charles Davis, 7607 South Wall Street. I object to this application, including for the inconsistencies noted in the staff report, and I request a recommendation for denial. I appreciate the staff's hard work on this and especially Quinn Steele. Their impartial analysis should be taken seriously into account as to the many problems posed by this application versus that of the applicants. I moved into this neighborhood last year with my wife Amanda as our first home, which is less than 1,000 feet from this proposed project. This is a neighborhood composed, as we heard, of single-family homes under a use that complies with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, and we relied on the existing R-10 designation being protected when we moved there. There are numerous problems, as we heard, with this application's proposal, the approval of which will negatively impact our neighborhood and our fellow residents. I disagree with the applicant's statements about, you know, the intense uses surrounding or surrounding this neighborhood. The base does not, while it is adjacent, the base traffic and impact doesn't go into our neighborhood. There's one gate on Manhattan that, for the most part, remains closed unless there's some issue regarding like a truck or whatnot that needs to go into the base. And as we heard, this, even though there's CMU 35 just south of the site, it's, it's not used. So this is a functionally R-10 neighborhood. I don't want to belabor these points, but as the staff report notes, there are also serious concerns with public safety, evacuation routes, and local roadway use. Manhattan Avenue is strained enough by existing truck and resident traffic, and this application to apply significant density increase right at the bottleneck with Richardson will significantly hinder access to and from our neighborhood. As noted in the staff report as well, this application is flatly inconsistent with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan's foundational principle to protect and maintain the character of existing residential areas. Unlike the many differences from the closest townhome community to this site cited by the applicant, such as roadway access, which is very important for, as we heard, evacuation routes and just access in this community, this application's significant density increase to allow for a townhome multifamily use in a predominantly single-family neighborhood with virtually no transition in a way that would set a precedent for future inappropriate land use changes if approved should be denied. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right. I think that's all we had sign up for this one. We'll go grab that. Yeah, come forward, please.
Hi, thank you. My name's Will Eastman. I'm a resident of this neighborhood, 7707 South Shamrock. I'm, I have some serious concerns with this project, and I'm voicing concerns for our entire Lennar Port Tampa development. Now, there have been a number of inconsistencies. I think you've heard from Mr. Pressman, you've heard from the gentleman who lives on Wall Street. And what I'd like to point out to you is that Todd, just now disputed that this is a single-family home neighborhood. All you have to do is go on Google Maps and you know that's a lie. Okay? It's an outright lie. Okay? As Stephanie pointed out, we were told that by the developer that he was unaware this site is contaminated, yet the record shows that he sued you all. He sued the city the day after they closed on this property. Now, explain that, right? So, so if somebody is telling blatant lies about that, I do not trust them to clean up this site. Okay? We live just down the street from this site. How do we know that they're going to clean it up in a way that's not going to release more contaminants into our neighborhood? And once they clean it up, who's going to come and inspect it to make sure that they did a good job? It's just mind-boggling. In terms of flooding, in the hurricanes last year, our entire neighborhood was flooded. You couldn't get in for days, right at that intersection. The only people who could get into our neighborhood had big trucks. This site is full of problems. There's a dump to the north. Nobody's mentioned that there are jet fuel lines less than 50 feet across the street. What happens if there's a rupture? Gas? Explosions? Right? And then there's MacDill Air Force Base. Now, the zoning in our neighborhood is 10 units per acre because it is a designated space where there could be an aviation accident. You don't want high density. That's why our neighborhood's single-family houses. Right? They want to increase that zoning from 10 to 20 units per acre. Right? Now, in this meeting that we had back in October, we asked them, what type of developments are you going to put there? They said villa-style homes. Why do you need 20 units per acre to build villa-style homes? It's not going to fit. Are these villas for ants? It doesn't make sense. Okay? Use your common judgment. Thank you for listening to me, but you know that this development shouldn't go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, I think that's all we had sign up in the public comment, hopefully. All right, Mr. Pressman, I'll give you a three-minute response.
If we could pull up the, if we could pull up the overhead, please. When you look at this aerial, one thing becomes pretty clear, that there's a huge airport virtually right next door to the site. So the site is right here. Sure, there's single-family, but I also showed you that there's multifamily in the immediate vicinity as well. That works really well. And that's what the comp plan asked for. So in terms of an evaluation of the site, to keep saying it's single-family, sure, there's a single-family component, but there's mixed use, I'm sorry, there's multifamily use, and there's public semi-public that's existing, and the site is literally surrounded by public semi-public and CMU 35. That's the character of the future land use map, that's the character of the area. And with respect to Ms. Pointer, as Mr. Bernstein has told me, that once the site is cleaned up under tremendous supervision by the EPC Director, which is tremendously supervised and watched, that it is requirement of a Ministry of Chapter Code 62780, that it then must become a notation or statement on the deeds that the garbage dump or that there was impact of a garbage dump to be disclosed. So to say that these will not be disclosed, that is required, as I've been told by administrative code, State of Florida law. So, in summary again, what we don't want is single-family, we don't want people who want pools in their backyards. Is that the last thing that we have to have happen here? Because that will destroy the soil cap, that will destroy the cleanup, that will destroy the safety of the site that's put in place as required by the environmental elements of the county and the state. So that, we appreciate your attention and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, over to our planning commissioners for comments and questions, discussion. Commissioner Seaman.
I guess these probably are for the developer, if he's here, or she. The first one is, or Mr. Pressman, the first one is, is the developer required to disclose the methane issues and the environmental issues to any potential purchaser or lessee?
John, do you want to answer that? You might be better to answer it than I.
I'm just a zoning guy. My name is John Burnson. I'm a professional geologist with the firm Envirex LLC. The, there must be some disclosure laws in the State of Florida that you would have to disclose the presence of contamination. It's the responsibility of the real property owner or the responsible party for contamination to report that it's present.
I guess another question maybe for you then, but I would imagine this would probably be more for civil engineers. How, do you know, do you guys know how the developer would handle retention on the site if it needs to be mainly impervious?
That's going to be an issue for the civil engineer.
Okay. Is the site within the flight path? That would be a Mr. Pressman question, I imagine.
I have not researched that, nor has that issue come up. I don't have any answer for that.
I know that sites within the flight path are limited in terms of density.
Certainly, if it is in the flight path, it would be limited in some capacity. What that is, I don't know. But that's obviously something that would have to occur.
It's not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's it for questions, I guess, as far as commentary is concerned. I, you know, I know that this is sensitive, being in the coastal high hazard area, being in South Tampa, you know, everybody's concerned about wanting additional housing in the area. Obviously, there's concerns, environmental concerns, but those have to be ameliorated before anything can ever be developed, as far as the EPC is concerned. Our last previous commissioner from MacDill mentioned that, you know, people who work on base are traveling an hour and a half each way to get to work because they don't have affordable housing in the area. And this, I would be willing to bet that this site is going to be either for sale or for rent townhomes because an apartment complex wouldn't make a whole lot of sense from a financial perspective on this site. And so, you know, giving more people the availability to have housing that's that close to the base, that's, you know, either rental or purchasable, I think would be, you know, potentially really helpful. And, and I think could serve a really important purpose in this community. So I just wanted to mention that.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Seaman. I'll remind everyone that if we are going to make a motion to go against staff, we're going to need some policies, so be thinking of that. But Commissioner Kugler, please go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, I have a number of concerns. The, the one effort to mitigate the pollution sounds, sounds very good and noble, but I, you know, I grew up during the time of Love Canal and Three Mile Island, and I do know a lot of efforts are destroyed very easily by even less than a hurricane-force event. And I do know that Mr. Pressman had mentioned that it's a fairly fragile cap. Don't want any swimming pools built, but I wonder what other things people can do on their property that can pierce that cap. But my, some of my main concerns were really that it is in the coastal high hazard area. In my, I love looking at maps, and I was trying to determine the altitude or the elevation of that property, and I came up with all kinds of different readings, everything from 13 feet to 40 feet. I don't know if anybody in the city staff had, had done that, had determined what the true elevation is or if it's a whole variety of elevations. But I'm also, when I looked at the map, there appeared to be a very nice green border all around MacDill Air Force Base, and it was very consistent green border around it, which would be an absorption area if we do have storms. This development, for some reason, that property looked, on the map, looked like a deep cut into that, into that border, reducing it in half at that point of the property. So that was another concern I had, and the last one was, I have no idea how landfills handle flooding events, but I will, I will try to study it in my next research time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kugler. Mr. Seaman?
To answer that question, the elevation's 13 feet and 11 feet. And I believe what it base, finished floor elevation needs to be above 10 feet, I think, in order to not have to be raised additionally. I don't know, that's maybe a question for the city.
Commissioner Bowden?
I'd be, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't hear from the base not to call you to the floor, but I'm interested in, from the basis perspective, on how you guys see this development.
We have no issues with it. It doesn't cause any problems to our mission. That's our main concern. Everything else, that's for everybody else here.
All right. Any comments, Commissioner Berry? Are there any? Ms. Renita?
I just wanted to provide one point of clarification, that the residential 10 land use category does not preclude attached, single-family, or it does, it, so the res-20, yes, that allows for attached as well, but so does the res-10. The difference is the increased number of units.
Okay. So the single-family versus not single-family is kind of a moot point.
Right. I mean, in those townhomes that Mr. Pressman pointed out are in the residential 10.
Right.
So.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Bowden?
I have a question. Do we have the City of Tampa that can maybe share some light fare thoughts?
Sorry. Evan Johnson, Tampa City Planning. Well, as was documented well in our staff report, I think our primary concern is coastal high hazard area. Primary concern is it is a single-family area. I think referring to MacDill as a huge airport and trying to use that for a discussion of how it's not in a single-family area was, wouldn't necessarily be accurate. I also had a couple of things that I just wanted to point out. The CMU 35 does exist to the south, it is on city-owned property. We have asked around, it has been CMU 35 for some time. We've been doing what we can, now, there is no guarantee, but as far as anybody that we've been able to touch at the city, we have no development plans on that property. It is CMU 35 from what was a previous plan many, many years ago. And the property to the north is a old landfill, and we do own it and we store, you know, garbage there and so forth. So generally, I think the argument is, or our concerns were really just about development. And I thought, you know, I don't think necessarily the possibility of cleanup is a reason to approve a plan amendment. So I think for us, it's really the discussion about the coastal high, increasing residential density. Those were our concerns.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowden.
Okay. Well, my major concerns with the property is, one, it's limited transit in the area. So if you're talking about, like, being in the coastal high hazard area, presently there's very limited transit, the transit corridor. Number two, it doesn't show a, you know, you are increasing the density in the area as well, which also puts additional people, you know, in danger. And the, the landfill, along with the, the overall flood area, so, you know, and in my research, I did find out about the legal issue that was filed, you know, like, in regards to it as well. So those are my major concerns about the property and actually doing, you know, a transition this great, you know, in that particular area.
All right. Thank you. I did have a question myself. I was wondering about this discrepancy, I guess I was the only one that stuck with. Mr. Pressman said that 63% of the site or something like that, some number above 50%. Remember, we discussed this in my briefing, I was, we talked about that 50% number. Who is right? Is Mr. Pressman right or is the staff report right?
I'll let Quinn address how we arrived at the numbers.
Sure. So we broke it down in our staff report by parcel. So we had our GIS analysts look into the parcel data and the coastal high hazard. The western parcel, 80% is within the coastal high hazard area, so this is two parcels we're looking at. The eastern parcel is 34% in the coastal high hazard area, but if you look at the map, there's no way to evacuate from the site that doesn't go throughout the coastal high hazard area. So the purpose is for our analysis is that it would be considered within the coastal high hazard area.
Right. Just to add to that, the second part of that policy, besides the 50%, then says isolated areas that are defined by the slosh model, ah, to be at higher elevations but are, and are surrounded by the coastal high hazard area, or by the coastal high hazard area and a body of water, shall be considered within the coastal high hazard area. So it's recognizing that there might be isolated higher areas that are surrounded by the coastal high hazard area.
That's some gymnastics. Mr. Pressman, how did you come up with your number? Mr. Pressman, how did you come up with your number?
Our planner reported that to us. 37% was in, 63% was out.
And then you don't have any other information on how they came up with it, or?
We hired a private planner. That was part of her findings.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't challenge her report.
Okay. And the reason I ask this, I've, you know, this doesn't have to do with this, but I've noticed some discrepancy in our maps that I wanted to talk to you about, especially the urban service map is where I start off with. And when you're trying to calculate area based on those maps, there's, there's something wonky going on that we're going to need to talk about. It's also why I wanted to get the GIS, because I wanted to drill down on it myself. So it gives me some concern here, this debate about how much is in and how much is out. I'm, I'm not calling anyone a liar here. I just like to actually understand what is in and what is out, without gymnastics and all this other stuff, like, just, you know, give me a base area of what's in and what's out. It would be nice to know, so, but I see I'm not going to get that here tonight, so that's, that's, it is what it is. Commissioner Seaman?
I think my, my hunch is that it's the average. So I think it's the eastern parcel that's 80% uplift, or, you know, 80% not in the coastal high hazard area, and the other parcel is 30% in the coastal high hazard area. I think when you average them out, you get the 60% not in the coastal high hazard area. But I actually had a question for the city because it said that there's no evacuation route, but doesn't this parcel, like, isn't it, isn't Manhattan the easternmost boundary? So wouldn't that be the way that you would get out?
Evan Johnson, City Planning. I believe that that was, there's no evacuation route that is not within the coastal high hazard area. So all the roadways surrounding the site and the coastal high kind of surrounds the, what is the landfill, they all are within the coastal high hazard area. The landfill area, the former landfill itself is higher, which is why it's an island, but the roadways around it are in the coastal high. I think that was what the comment was meant to say.
My, well, I just, I'm not looking at a coastal high hazard area map, but the, if the easternmost bound, you know, parcel is not in the coastal high hazard area, then how would the roadway be in the coastal high hazard area?
Well, I'm just looking at the map right now. It drops off, and Manhattan is in the coastal high.
Okay. Okay. I, I mean, my point, you know, I've been through it with, about the coastal high hazard area a whole bunch of times, but, you know, I just think if we're ever going to grow as a city, we have to just get over some of this stuff. I mean, it's, Boston's in the coastal high hazard area, you know, Miami's in the coastal high hazard area. People develop in the coastal high hazard area, and everybody, you know, a lot of the time is fine. And that's how we improve the infrastructure of the city, is by new civil infrastructure for new projects. And that's how we offset some of this water. It's not going to magically evaporate. We have to compensate for it, and we do that with new civil infrastructure, which, to my old, my old point, is why, you know, West Shore Yacht Club and Harbor Island didn't flood in the last hurricanes, which is incredible, but if you think about the way they were built, it's very different from Bay Shore that was built in 1920 before there was any civil infrastructure. I'll get off my soapbox.
I'll go to Commissioner Lauk, and then I'll come back. Oh, you want to respond?
No, I think, no, not to bring our, but just to clarify two points that were discussed. One is, our planners' report is that this site would be the first to be under mandatory evacuation. So at that point, access, if that's the case, over coastal high hazard road wouldn't apply because they'd be mandatory to leave. Secondly, the issue about the percentage, I understand your concerns, the only point we were making was, we looked at a big difference between how your staff, with respect how your staff looked at it. They looked at it as if the whole site were coastal high hazard, that's how they're required to, but the reality is that a great portion of the property is not. That's the only main point we're making. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Lauk?
In my mind, the issue isn't around the high coastal hazard area. Its sites are 10. It can be built on today. There's three acres there, roughly 32 units. Someone can check me with staff. We can have a very dense build-out already occur on that property. So the conversation in my mind that we ought to be having is, is this particular parcel in an area where we need the density? Because provision after provision tells us that we want more density. And every time we get a parcel that comes to us that's in the high hazard, and we talk about moving from 32 to maybe 64, 55, whatever the number's going to yield when we go to R20, is that really going to, in the grand scheme of things, make a giant difference when we're already able to build there from a development standpoint? It's R10. The developer's already going to build. If we deny it tonight, city council affirms our finding, there's going to be development there in the next calendar year. So the question for us, is the density appropriate for this area, not the coastal high hazard in my mind? And I look at this property through that lens, and frankly, I'm a little flummoxed on whether it is appropriate. I think with a bus stop and transit a half mile away, which neither staff report talked about, there is good public transit in the area. Our, Commissioner Fernandez told us over and over again, the housing for the base was not aligned with the ability to work there. So the housing around it was not aligned with the ability to work there. We don't need apartments. They need townhomes and homes that people can provide down there on that base. And we're going to have less traffic coming out of the base potentially once these are built, or more properties like these, because you're going to be flooding into North Tampa, up to Dale Mabry, out to Brandon, where a lot of these folks live. So I'm a little torn on this one, but I don't think the coastal high hazard is the right point of discussion at all for this property.
Thank you, Commissioner Lauk. Commissioner Orton?
I pulled up the FEMA map, and all of that area surrounding it is in the coastal high hazard area, except for the dump, and that was because it was raised. And so, all the areas, the roads, everything is in the coastal high hazard area. Secondly, if you've ever tried to get on the base, the line is very long, very slow, and adding additional homes is not going to help that, the additional density. Also, the people that live out there already said it floods. So we know it does flood out there already. So why are we creating more density when the density that's already on the site is compatible to everything else that's around it, including those townhomes, which are very nice townhomes, but I don't believe that the density should be raised?
All right. Good points, Commissioner Orton. Oh, Ms. Renita, sorry.
I was just going to say that 32 units is what could be built today. Yes.
All right. Commissioner Kugler?
Just a comment that, when you're looking for a good evacuation route, you want to make sure it's above the water the whole way, and one dip can totally end the use of it as an evacuation route. I've been there.
Good thoughts from the commissioners. Commissioner Seaman?
I would just say that, that Commissioner Kugler's completely right about that, and I think that is what some people fail to realize, is that, you know, I've, I've lived here my whole life, you know, my mom's lived here her whole life. The roads that flood when it rains are the same roads that flooded when my mom started driving, when she was 16 years old in South Tampa. They haven't changed. You just have to know how to drive around them every time it rains. It's an inevitability.
All right. Are there any other thoughts or questions, discussions, or comments from the commissioners? Remind everybody that if anyone's making a motion against staff, we're going to need some policies for that. I will put it out there for, oop, Commissioner Seaman?
All right. I'm going to make a motion.
Oh, whoa, whoa, we're not there yet.
Nope, sorry.
All right. Commissioner Lauk?
I just had a question for staff, because policy reads that when we look at the, after I said the high coastal hazard doesn't matter, I'm going to ask a question for staff, because it reads as if it's a net increase overall into the city. And we, we always tend to look at it from a parcel level, right? So again, I think these 32 going to res 20, I don't know what the number is. It just doubles to 64, but we're looking at individual parcels, and when we say no net increase, like, it's a uniform rule. Do we look at citywide applications and what's happened in the past year, the past two years, to see what we've actually done in the high coastal hazard area?
As if, to what we have approved in the coastal high hazard area? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, because it's, it's spelled out as a citywide increase?
Yes.
You're seeing one, but not a parcel increase?
Yes. We look at it as no net increase at all at any parcel level across the city.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions, thoughts, or comments on this one? Ms. Renita?
Let me, let me just add to that, that, that we have, in past applications, tried to look at, there was one on Rocky Point where they wanted something increased, but they wanted to decrease on part of the land as well. So, and we have tried to look at that no net increase more broadly, but it's very hard to define it beyond the individual parcel, so...
All right. Commissioner Bowden?
Yeah, I think it was last year, maybe early this year, that we discussed this net increase in the coastal high hazard area. And the thing that was brought up is that there is the capability to build in the area, it's just an additional increase. So you can't be, like, we're talking about R10. So you can do the R10, but to take it to a net, to take it to R20, that's your increase. So you stay flat. You still build. It doesn't say you can't build. It says that you cannot increase. So that's what I remember the conversation that we had.
Good point. All right. Are there any other thoughts, comments, questions from the commissioners? Going once, going twice? I'm going to close the public comment on this item and open the floor up to motions from the commissioners. Commissioner Seaman, I see you moving.
All right. I would like to make a motion, and the reason I'm doing this is because I really do believe, as the city of Tampa says, that we need more housing in the places that people want to live, and South Tampa is one of those places. So I'd like to make a motion to find TACPA 25-14, consistent with the comprehensive plan given land use policy 9.6.1.
Consistent or inconsistent?
Consistent.
Okay. Oh, staff found it inconsistent. All right. All right. Is there a second out there anywhere? I guess it's kind of quiet. Nobody's... Commissioner Lauk?
Let's have two votes tonight. I'll second it.
All right. We got a consistency finding by Commissioner Seaman citing policy 9.6.1, second to that motion by Commissioner Lauk. Are there any questions, comments? I, well, I just know this one's going to be all over the place, so I'm just going to turn it right over to a roll call vote on this one.
Bowden?
No.
Jimson?
No.
Kugler?
No.
Lauk?
Yes.
Seaman? Joseph?
Yes.
Motion fails three to three. Commissioners Bowden, Jimson, and Kugler voted no.
All right.
Now we need another motion.
Yep, we're going to need another motion. Commissioner Bowden?
I make a motion that TACPA 25-14, we found inconsistent.
All right. We got a motion of inconsistency finding by Commissioner Bowden, second by Commissioner Kugler. Are there any questions from the planning commissioners before we take our vote again? Not seeing any. I'll turn it over to the clerk for another roll call vote.
Bowden?
Yes.
Jimson?
Yes.
Kugler?
Yes.
Lauk?
No.
Seaman?
No.
Joseph?
No.
Motion fails three to three. Commissioners Lauk, Seaman, and Joseph voted no.
All right. Somebody's going to have to move here. Everybody have some more conversation on this one, because we got to do something. I mean, or can we send it tied, Tracy? We have to come up with something, right?
Yes. Or, or the city's going to make a decision without your recommendation.
Well, they're going to do that anyway, but, yeah. All right.
That's the short story. Okay.
I'll say, I'll say staff did a fantastic job on this one, balancing the coastal high hazard area with the land use component of it. But I would ask a question to one of you two. If this property didn't have the coastal high hazard area, what would the finding have been, and how big of a deterrent, not a deterrent, but a factor was it in the evaluation?
Great question. I think the coastal high hazard was one of the main reasons for inconsistency, outside of the fact that it was on a local roadway. We did mention in our report that there is transit, but there is no continuous sidewalks to transit. It's about half a mile north, near Interbay and Manhattan. But yes, a huge portion of our analysis was the coastal high hazard area. I wouldn't be able to say for sure what our finding would be if it was not in the coastal high hazard area, but that was a very large consideration of ours.
Thank you. And I'll say this, I was on the fence, so to speak, when this one, when this one started, and I didn't expect to dig my heels in on it. I was going to be willing to switch my vote on the second vote, but ironically, when I heard comments down here about the line outside of McDill Air Force Base, I think density down here only serves to help that, because you don't have people commuting so far in order to get to the base. And this is the exact kind of housing that Commissioner Fernandez said was needed down there. So again, I was going to flip my vote on the second vote and get this through and get it off our plate, but because of those comments and knowing about that line at the base and, like, decreasing the commute for this, and if I'm wrong on that, tell me, because I'm willing to, like, swing based on one of those determining factors.
No, you are correct. It's going to be aligned regardless.
Right.
But it's a lot of people going on that base every day. It's always aligned. I go through that gate every morning. It's backed up. But building houses there, I think it's a great idea. You know, we, I drive an hour and a half to base, but I also live somewhere else. But it's going to be aligned there regardless. Housing there is a great idea. I think we should, people need housing there. It's three, four years, they're going to buy it and rent it out, or whatever they're going to do with it. I see bikers going through the base all the time from that, from that gate, tanker gate. So it's going to be, it's going to be aligned there regardless of if you build there or not. More likely, you're going to build there because it is R10, right?
Thank you, Commissioner Berry. And just to, it's Commissioner Rodriguez, not Commissioner Fernandez. I do, I do the same thing every now and then too, so don't feel alone. Believe me, I do the same thing.
You slapped me in the back of the head on the last meeting about this too, and I don't know what I'm doing. I looked down there and I had to see Tony. Sorry, Tony, if you're out there watching.
Yeah. He's definitely watching this one. Commissioner Kugler?
Are there any consequences? And I, and I think the answer's yes, but I want to just hear it out. When you build new, new, more concentrated housing, does that put the surrounding legacy homes into drainage basins at that point, relative to the, to the higher heights? That's, that's one thing I've noticed.
I think it really does depend on the way the civil infrastructure and retention is designed and constructed. And sometimes you have a bad civil engineer who doesn't construct it well, or doesn't design it well, and then a bad contractor who doesn't construct it well. But sometimes you have, you know, really good consultants and contractors who both design and build it well, and it can improve the drainage situation for the surrounding neighbors as well.
I don't know if anybody's budged. This one might, might have to go as a tie. I don't know if anybody's willing to back up off their vote. Commissioner Lauk?
Do we want to try one more vote?
All right. We can, we can...
Let's try two more.
Try one more. But we're going to need a motion first, so before... All right, Commissioner Seaman?
All right. Let's try again. All right. I, I move that we find TACPA 25-14, consistent with the city of Tampa's comprehensive plan given, given 9.6.1.
All right. Yeah. Motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Seaman citing 9.6.1, the same motion she made the first time, second by Commissioner Lauk. And are there any questions, comments from the commissioners? We probably know it all well at this point, so I'll turn it over to the clerk.
Bowden?
No.
Jimson?
Yes.
Kugler?
No.
Lauk?
Yes.
Seaman?
We probably know it all well at this point, so I'll turn it over to the clerk.
Bowden?
No.
Jimson?
Yes.
Kugler?
No.
Lauk?
Yes.
Seaman? Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carries four to two, commissioners Bowden and Kugler voted no.
There we go, all right. Thank you. Make sure you go to the city of Tampa meeting, because that's the one that really counts. Remember, it's just a recommendation, they're gonna still make the final decision over there, so as Mr. Williams knows well. All right, onto our next agenda item. Two B, T A C P A twenty-five dash fifteen, comprehensive plan map amendment forty-three oh four, North Twenty-Sixth Street, forty-two oh five North Twenty-Fifth Street, and folio one five six seven eight one point zero 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 zero. The presenter is Emily Phelan.
Good evening, Emily Phelan, Planning Commission Staff. This is T A C P A twenty-five fifteen, located at forty-three oh four North Twenty-Sixth Street, forty-two oh five North Twenty-Fifth Street, and folio one five six seven eighty-one point zero 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 zero. Before I continue with my presentation, the next two items are adjacent to each other. This item is publicly, this item is privately initiated, and the second item will be publicly initiated. They are adjacent to each other. And as I said, this is privately initiated, it's small scale, it's approximately one point three six acres, and the request is to go from residential ten to residential twenty. This is a general location map. It's located in the Central Tampa Planning District, the East Tampa Urban Village, the East Tampa One Neighborhood, and the East Tampa CRA. This is an aerial of the subject site. This site is outlined in pink, and the outline in blue is the adjacent site that will be the next item. The area is primarily single-family detached. Directly to the west of the subject site is Pharrell Girls Preparatory Academy. And to the southeast of the site, approximately here, is Lomax Magnet Elementary School. And four blocks to the south is East Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. This is looking at the subject site along Twenty-Sixth Street. This is looking at the subject site along North Twenty-Fifth Street. This is looking west of the site at the Pharrell Girls Preparatory Academy and along North Twenty-Fifth Street. This is looking northeast along North Twenty-Fifth Street, the subject site is on the right. And this is looking south at the intersection of North Twenty-Fifth, North Twenty-Sixth Street and East Thirty-Eighth Avenue at the surrounding area. This is the adopted future land use map. The subject site is outlined in black and represented with the residential ten designation, which is to the northeast and partially to the south of the subject site, which does transition into the dark brown, which is the residential twenty designation. And to the west is the public semi-public, which is the preparatory academy as mentioned. This is the proposed future land use map outlined in black and represented with the residential twenty designation. This was sent to the reviewing agencies and we received no objections. This is the potential impacts of the subject site. Under the existing residential ten designation, the site could be considered for thirteen units or just over twenty thousand eight hundred square feet of non-residential uses if locational criteria is met. Under the proposed residential twenty designation, the subject site could be considered for twenty-seven dwelling units or just over twenty-nine thousand seven hundred square feet of non-residential uses if locational criteria is met. Under both the existing residential ten and the proposed residential twenty, the subject site does still have to meet locational criteria. However, under the residential twenty designation, that criteria is expanded upon. These policies were considered by Planning Commission Staff in the evaluation of the amendment. The comprehensive plan encourages infill development on vacant and underutilized sites and to use land, land resources efficiently. The site is vacant and has the potential to introduce mostly multifamily uses. Additionally, the comprehensive plan protects and maintains the character of existing residential areas. Planning Commission Staff found the proposed amendment consistent with the policies listed on this slide. The comprehensive plan protects the character of existing residential areas while balancing the need for new development to be compatible with the neighborhood character. The proposed amendment would allow for a logical transition in density to the single-family detached neighborhood to the south. And lastly, the plan identifies the need to designate enough land for housing options to meet the needs of Tampa's growing population. With that, Planning Commission Staff recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. And this concludes my presentation, if you have any questions.
Was this the publicly initiated one?
This one is the privately initiated one.
Does the applicant have a presentation?
He is present.
Good evening, Commissioner Steve McElhany. We are the applicants and petitioners on this project, and I'm happy to tell you this is not coastal high hazard. So we're not, we're not gonna go there. We are, we're looking at, and I'll show you the, the overhead here. Is that clear, or is it? We're, we're looking at transitioning between, you have residential twenty here along the south side, and then this is the parcel that we're at requesting the residential twenty to be designated from the R-10. And, I'm sorry, and the, the, the Planning Commission Staff thought our idea was so great that they initiated a private, or public initiated parcel to include this one here, which, you know, it shows basically that this project is going to help relieve some of the housing issues that are apparent in this area. It is a redevelopment area, and we're gonna have to improve some road networks for the connections. Although, you know, it shows on the city map that those roadways are there, they're, they're not there. We're gonna have to build the roads on Twenty-Fifth Street and also improve Twenty-Sixth Street. And then, I know this is, this is part of the rezoning, and I don't want to go too deeply into that, but we're gonna have a connector road that goes between the two and relieves some of that traffic congestion. And we're also gonna be providing drainage that is badly needed in the area that's been ignored for, for quite a while. The, it's, it's, the, the area is in need of new housing, and this will provide some housing opportunities. And it's a great transition between the residential twenty on the south and the res twenty that we're asking for immediately to the north. And then we have the school on the, on the west side, and then we have other housing on the east side. There were no objections, it is an infill, and it is an underutilized area. I think that it addresses a number of concerns that are, that are contained in the comprehensive plan. And it is in an area that is expecting and is, it really does need some additional housing inserted into it. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. But we've assembled a large tract of land here, and it'll be a very attractive transitional development, should this be approved. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, all right. We had a couple individuals sign up here in the public comment for this one. First, I want to check online, because one of them is virtual, and that is Michael Lamb. Is Michael Lamb in the, nope, all right.
Michael Lamb did not check in.
All right, sounds good, moving right along. We have Devin I, is it, is it? Devin?
Hello, everyone, my name is Devin Izzet, and I live at two-six-oh-one East Genesee. And this project's gonna be right in my front yard. And I did have a couple of concerns about drainage on Twenty-Sixth Street. The drain is located a little bit higher from where all the water sits. So during a rain event, you'll get, you know, as much as a foot of water in the street there. And so I did have a concern about, you know, putting a lot of houses there or a big concrete slab and that water not draining anywhere, but I'm glad you did address those concerns. And I was also worried about traffic as well. A lot of children walk to school up and down that street. And having an excess of cars would be kind of a bad thing. But if, if there is going to be a road and the drainage would be fixed, you know, those, those were my primary concerns. I did also want to bring up that there was a single-family home located on that property. And I've lived there for five years, I watched them remodel it, and it was taken down. I don't know the quality of the house that was there. But, yeah, I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention. It's, you can still find the Zillow listing for it at forty-three oh four North Twenty-Sixth Street. And I know some of your policies, the L U nine point five point two and L U nine point five point four had said in it that, you know, that you're not in favor of demolishing single-family homes in the area. Basically, the whole neighborhood is like single-family right now. So it, it's gonna be interesting to see a multi-tenant space there. I, I don't know if it's really gonna match the area, but we do need something nice there. When it comes to density, you know, like, I don't know if it really fits the neighborhood, is my personal take on it. But thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you, sir. Good comments, all right. That's all we had sign up in the public comment, so we will turn it back over to you, Mr. McElhany, for three minutes response.
Steve McElhany again. You know, we recognize the site needs a lot of work, and apparently the city has, has not done its work and has abandoned this area for quite a while. So the infrastructure will be completely rebuilt, and, and the drainage issue will be addressed. You cannot create more drainage problems, you have to resolve it, and that, that's just part of the development criteria. So the, the pre and post conditions will be a much better product, and it will assist that neighborhood in addressing some, some of the long-term issues. It's, it's badly in need of redevelopment. It's, it's an area that the city has been trying to attract new housing for quite some time. And, and quite honestly, this, this particular owner is willing to go in, make those commitments, and, and improve the infrastructure in order to enable them to, to put in the nice product. So we'd respectfully request your approval and moving forward to city council. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, all right. Over to the planning commissioners for discussions, questions, comments on this one. Not seeing a lot of motion or excitement here, so I will close the public comment on this one and open it up to motions from the commissioners. Anyone? Commissioner Seaman?
Motion to find T A C P A twenty-five dash fifteen consistent with the comprehensive plan.
All right, is there a second out there? Commissioner Kugler?
Yes.
All right, second. We got a motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Seaman, second to that motion by Commissioner Kugler. Any questions, comments from the commissioners before we take our vote? I'm gonna give this one a try, then would all signify their agreement by saying aye, aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, commissioners.
Thank you.
And as I said, I'm happy it's not six, C H A J.
Us two.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have item two C, T A C P A twenty-five dash seventeen, comprehensive plan map amendment forty-two sixteen, North Twenty-Sixth Street. And the presenter is, again, Emily Phelan.
Emily Phelan, Planning Commission Staff. This is T A C P A twenty-five seventeen, located at forty-two sixteen North Twenty-Sixth Street. This one is publicly initiated, it is small scale, and it is approximately zero point two five acres. The request is to go from residential ten to residential twenty. This is the general location of the site, it's located in the Central Tampa Planning District, the East Tampa Urban Village, the East Tampa One Neighborhood, and the East Tampa CRA. This is the aerial of the subject site. The subject site is outlined in pink, and the blue is the adjacent site that you have just voted on. Again, the surrounding area is primarily single-family detached with the Pharrell Girls Preparatory Academy to the west and Lomax Magnet Elementary to the southeast of the site. This is looking at the subject site. This is looking northeast at North Twenty-Sixth Street and East Genesee Street. This is looking south at the intersection of North Twenty-Sixth Street and East Thirty-Eighth Avenue. The same photo is previously just showed the surrounding area. And this is looking northwest along North Twenty-Sixth Street. The subject site is off to the left, and this is the previous amendment that you've just heard. This is the adopted future land use map. Again, the subject site is outlined in black and represented with the residential ten designation, which is to the north and east of the subject site. To the south is the residential twenty, and moving further south towards East Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard, which is approximately four blocks south, is the Community Commercial Thirty-five designation, and the public semi-public is the preparatory academy as mentioned previously. This is the proposed future land use map. The subject site is outlined in black and represented with the residential twenty designation. This was sent out for agency review, and we received no objections from our reviewing agencies. The, under the existing residential ten designation of the subject site, it could be considered for two dwelling units or just over three thousand eight hundred square feet of non-residential uses if locational criteria is met. Under the proposed residential twenty designation, the site could be considered for five units or just over five thousand four hundred square feet of non-residential uses if locational criteria is met. While under the residential ten and the residential twenty, the subject site still has to meet locational criteria. It is expanded upon in the residential twenty designation. Planning Commission Staff considered these policies in the evaluation of the amendment. The comprehensive plan encourages infill development on vacant and underutilized sites and to use land resources efficiently. The proposed amendment has the potential to introduce multifamily uses. And the comprehensive plan also protects and maintains the character of existing residential areas. The proposed amendment is consistent with the following objectives and policies listed on this slide. The comprehensive plan protects the character of existing residential areas while balancing the need for new development to be compatible with the neighborhood character. The proposed amendment would allow for a logical transition in density to the single-family detached neighborhood to the south. And finally, the plan, the comprehensive plan identifies the need to designate enough land for housing options to meet the needs of Tampa's growing population. With that, Planning Commission Staff recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. And that concludes my presentation, if you have any questions.
All right, thank you very much, and this is the public one, right? Okay.
Correct.
All right, so we didn't have anyone sign up in the public comment for this one, so I will turn it over to commissioners for questions, comments, discussion. Mr. McElhany.
I just wanted to add to that, it's, it's great that when the staff is, feels so good about your other one, that's a private one, that they want to piggyback on us. So we are very supportive of this happening, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, any comment, Commissioner Bowden?
Yeah, I just want to commend the staff for actually taking initiative to see that and actually doing that. I know we've had comments about, why didn't you look at this? So I commend you on doing that.
Thank you.
All right. Any thoughts or comments from the commissioners? Not seeing a lot of excitement, then I will go ahead and close the public comment on this item and open it up to motions. Commissioner Lauk?
Let's do it. Let's find the proposed future land use designation change for city of Tampa's C P A twenty-five dash seventeen from R-10 to R-20, consistent with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan.
Commissioner Kugler?
In second.
All right, we have a motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Lauk, a second to that by Commissioner Kugler. Any questions, comments from the commissioners before we take our vote? I'm gonna try this one too. Then would all signify their agreement by saying aye, aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously, all right. Thank you all for your time, have a good night. And next up, we have item two D, T A C P A twenty-five dash sixteen, comprehensive plan map amendment thirteen oh one, East Columbus Drive. And the presenter is Megan McCarthy.
Good evening, Megan McCarthy, Planning Commission Staff. This is T A C P A twenty-five sixteen, located at thirteen oh one East Columbus Drive. This amendment is privately initiated, small scale, and is approximately point twenty-four acres. The request is to go from a residential twenty future land use designation to residential thirty-five. The subject site is located within the Central Tampa Planning District, the East Tampa Urban Village, the V M Ebor Neighborhood, the Ebor City Local Historic District, as well as the East Tampa CRA District. This is an aerial of the subject site with the subject site outlined in yellow. The surrounding area is a mixture of uses, including single-family attached and single-family detached to the north, south, and west, with scattered commercial uses, the Academy Prep Center of Tampa, and a recreational area to the east along North Avenida Republica de Cuba. These are the site photos starting looking directly at the subject site. This is looking east along Columbus Drive with the subject site to the right-hand side. This is looking west along East Columbus Drive with the subject site behind the camera. This is looking at the east side courtyard of the subject site. And this is looking south along North Thirteenth Street with the subject site being the brick building to the left-hand side. This is the adopted future land use map. The subject site is shown outlined in black under the adopted residential twenty future land use designation. To the north, south, and west is the residential twenty. And to the east is the community mixed-use thirty-five as well as recreational open space. This is the proposed future land use map with the subject site shown under the proposed residential thirty-five designation. Under the current residential twenty, the site can be considered for four residential dwelling units. The site could be considered for twenty thousand nine hundred and eight square feet of commercial. The site could be considered for twenty thousand nine hundred and eight square feet of commercial uses subject to locational criteria. Under the proposed R- thirty-five designation, the site may be considered for eight residential dwelling units or twenty thousand nine hundred and eight square feet of, of commercial uses as the site is currently allowed a two-point-oh floor area ratio within the Ebor City Local Historic District, and this will not increase with the approval of the request. The proposed R- thirty-five designation may result in an increase in residential density with no increase in commercial intensity. Any non-residential uses would be subject to locational criteria, which remain the same under the R- thirty-five designation. We'd like to note that the application was sent to our partner agencies, and there were no objections to the request. However, we did a couple hours ago have a public comment from the V M Ebor Neighborhood that's available online. Staff used historic preservation policies in consideration for our recommendation as the structure occupying the subject site has historic significance as a previous boarding house. The Quito Boarding House was moved from East Fourteenth Avenue to the current site east on East Columbus Drive. While the structure is not officially designated as a local historic landmark, it is recognized as a contributing structure within the Ebor City Historic District map, defined as a structure that adds to the historic and architectural qualities, historic associations, or archaeological values for which a property is significant. As a contributing structure, the Quito Boarding House may be eligible for adaptive reuse policy, defined as the process of converting a building into a use other than that for which it was originally assigned, designed. A residential use for the site would not be eligible for adaptive reuse policy under this definition. Although the comprehensive plan supports historic preservation, this proposed amendment does not provide additional historic protections for the site, nor does it directly advance the historic preservation policies of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Additionally, policies related to redevelopment of residential areas were also taken into consideration when evaluating the amendment. The proposed amendment is recommended to be found consistent with the policies and objectives of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, including maintaining neighborhood character and compatibility. Additionally, the amendment was found consistent with policies encouraging adequate housing supply and infill development. Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. And this concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Does the applicant have a presentation? Okay. All right. We didn't have anyone sign up in the public comment for this one, so I will turn this one also over to the planning commissioners for questions, comments, discussions. Commissioner Lauk? Oh, Commissioner Kugler?
When I was reading through the documentation that was provided to us earlier, I only noticed that one little typo. It talked of North Fourteenth Avenue. And I think it should be East Fourteenth Avenue. Because North Fourteenth Street is nearby too.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lauk?
Just to understand clearly the process, so the Barrio Latino Commission, they will have input later in the process, but, because I didn't see anything in the packet.
That is correct. The B L C will have review, I believe, in January.
Yeah, Danny Collins, Planning Commission staff. So this is scheduled for a B L C hearing following this hearing. So I think it's in December, and then it'll go proceed, it'll proceed to the City Council hearing at the end of January.
Okay, so there's an, there's another review body. We, we increased the density. They want to level this not historic structure, but nineteen oh nine structure. They can't do that without this, this second body's review and approval?
So.
I know the scope, like, the intent, what the current project is, but by increasing the density, it opens up for later development down the road. I just want to understand what that process would be if they ever want to do something different than retrofit the existing structure.
Yeah, so the Barrio Latino Commission, they are required to review all plan amendments. So they'll review this plan amendment. This is just the land use change. And when there is a, an application for redeveloping the site, they'll also have another staff every viewing that as well. So for this instance, they'll just review the plan, the plan map.
Okay, and we appreciate the City of Tampa coming out, and we're itching to hear from them, so come on down. Please.
Evan Johnson, City of Tampa Planning. I was just going to clarify that it's, it would, it would still require a certificate of appropriateness to demolish the building. So they would still have to go through, they would have to get approval from B L C in order to knock the building down at some future date because it's in the local district.
Love it. Thank you.
Can I just ask the question? The letter that was, comments that were introduced, were they in support of or against this? I just want to.
The V M Ebor Neighborhood, Neighborhood Association was in opposition to this amendment.
Just wanted to get that on the record. People start complaining. All right. Are there any questions, comments, discussions further from the planning commissioners? Not seeing a lot of excitement, so going once, going twice. I will close the public comment on this one and open it up to motions from the planning commissioners on this item. Commissioner Lauk?
Let's take us home. Let's find the proposed future land use designation change for City of Tampa's C P A twenty-five dash sixteen from rez twenty to residential thirty-five, consistent with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, and forward this recommendation to the Tampa City Council.
Commissioner Jemison?
I second.
All right. We have a motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Lauk, a second to that motion by Commissioner Jemison. Questions or comments before I try this one more time for the night? Not seeing any, then would all signify their agreement by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you to the City of Tampa Planning staff for showing up. Thank you, everybody who beared with us all night. And at seven oh one P M., this meeting's adjourned. Stay warm, Hillsborough County.